All right, I'd like to call to order the October 6, 2020 special meeting of the ISD 622 School Board. The only thing on our agenda is revision of the 2020-2021 school calendar. So I'm not sure if somebody could talk that.
Okay. So, um, thank you, and I'm chaired directors of the board. We called this special meeting today, as you may recall, when we modified our secondary hybrid schedule, we did so, um, you know, we had a lot of conversation about that at our last meeting and the previous special meeting that we held before then. But when we looked at that new modified schedule, we wanted to really maximize all learning time. And so there's a couple of changes, and in your board packet, you have a list of those proposed changes. I think these are changes families will really appreciate. Originally Friday, October 23rd was supposed to be a professional development day for staff and secondary and conferences for elementary, and we moved that to the following Wednesday, October 28th. And the reason for that is that Friday now is an in-person hybrid day, and we didn't want to sacrifice one of our precious few in-person days to have a professional development day for staff. So we moved that to a Wednesday when students aren't here in person. And so that that made a lot of sense for us. The other thing is that Tuesday, November 3rd, Election Day, if you recall in our original calendar, we have that as a non-school day. It was also a professional development day. And the reason we did that was when we built the calendar last year, we agreed that we did not want to have the general public coming into our school buildings when students are there, just for safety reasons. And with elections becoming more and more contentious as they are, we wanted to not have school on an election day. However, and we agree to still, we still want to do that, and we still want to keep it as a non-school day for elementary, but we'd like to keep secondary students because they're all online in Zooms on a Tuesday now. We'd like to keep that schedule as it in a regular class schedule on Tuesday and move that secondary professional development to the Wednesday again, when there's not the synchronous instruction happening. And so those are basically the two changes, and both of those allow us to not interrupt learning time for students for these professional development and conference experiences. So I think it's something, it's a win-win for families. We've already, I had talked to Michelle about this last week when we called this special meeting. So we've already begun communicating this new schedule to our families anyway, saying pending board approval, because it's a pretty simple switch that I think families will all agree with. Any questions about that? I'll just say as a point of interest, we were discussing the calendar, the calendar committee's meeting right now for next year. And the question was raised, you know, do we need to worry about not having classes next year on Election Day? And my response to that group as they're planning right now is, I would, I would think we should always, if we can put a professional development day on an election day, let's do that. So that because our schools are polling locations, and we have a lot of people coming through, and although it may look like it's not going to be a busy election day, you never know what could be added. There could be a statewide referendum on something. I think about the Marriage Act that happened some years back. There could be a topic that shows up on that election day that we don't know about yet, and we want to be prepared when we make the calendar a year in advance to think about those possibilities. So that's just a side note.
All right. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll read their resolution. Okay, um, Kim, do you think I should read the full resolution with the description of the changes?
I think it makes sense just to reiterate what superintendent said. Sure.
Okay, so revision of the 2021-2022 school calendar, the approved district calendar needs the following adjustments in response to COVID-19 pandemic. Changes number one, Friday, October 23rd, 2020, will become a school day. This change will better balance a number of days our hybrid Group B students attend school in person with the hybrid Group A students. Number two, Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, will become a non-school day with K through five conferences and six through 12 staff development due to school being held on Friday, October 23rd, 2020. Number three, Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, Election Day, will remain a non-school day for elementary students as planned, but will become a synchronous, live, online learning day for secondary students. And then number four, Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, will become a non-school day for secondary students and a staff development day for secondary teachers to account for calendar adjustments made to November 3rd, 2020. Therefore, the Director of Communications and Technology Innovation recommends the following resolution, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number 622, that the 2020-2021 school calendar be revised to reflect the changes as presented. So I need a motion and a second, and then Kim will do a roll call.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jarman.
Second.
Second by Livingston. All in favor, say aye, and Kim will do a roll call.
Caleb Anderson.
Aye.
Steve Hunt.
Aye.
Ben Jarman.
Aye.
Nancy Livingston.
Aye.
Becky Navy.
Aye.
Carly Ruff.
Aye.
Michelle Yenner.
Aye. Okay, so that motion is approved, and thank you to the Calendar Committee and the others who worked on that. Before we adjourn the meeting, we're gonna go, we're gonna stay on this line for the next meeting, or are we getting off and getting back on?
We're staying on this one, so we can, we'll just do a motion and a second to adjourn, and then we can begin on the study session.
Okay, sounds good. So can I get a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Livingston.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye, and Kim will do a roll call.
Caleb Anderson.
Aye.
Steve Hunt.
Aye.
Ben Jarman.
Aye.
Nancy Livingston.
Aye.
Becky Navy.
Aye.
Carly Ruff.
Aye.
Michelle Yenner.
Aye. Okay, so the special session is adjourned, and everybody stay on the line, and I'm gonna open up in Board Book the regular study sessions. Give me a second. Okay, so then I'll call to order the October 6 study session. The time is 4:38, and the first item on the agenda is, and this is the study session, so the first item on the agenda is superintendent check-in.
All right, thank you, everybody. I know that there's a couple of quick things I just wanted to touch base about. First of all, I wanted to just provide a quick COVID update because I think that's important to continue to do. I know that many of you saw in our employee news, we kind of put some information that had happened. And Josh, if it's okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Am I able to do that?
You are set as a co-host, yes.
Okay, perfect. So just a couple of quick facts I was gonna share with you. This actually was the information that was sent out in our employee news to all employees this past weekend, so, or end of last week. And just a reminder for everybody, we're continuing to watch this Minnesota Department of Health has a 14-day rolling COVID case rate by county. And if you haven't looked at it lately, one of the things about this is it comes on a two-week lag, so it's not, this is, this is the most current version we have, and this was updated on the October 1st. And if you recall, this was kind of the policy options that are provided to us by the state in terms of at least the minimum requirements for being able to open. They want, they do give permission for elementary to be in person anywhere below 20, and middle school and hybrid, if it's above 10, even need to be in hybrid mode. Both have to be in hybrid mode if we get to 20 or more. And then, as you can see, it gets progressively higher. Now, what's been interesting is that we've been watching the data. So this is the 14-day case rate per 10,000 people by data specimen collection. So if you want to scroll down, and again, the last period measured is the 6th through the 19th of September, so you can see what a lag we're dealing with here, because this is our most current data. But if you look at, for example, Ramsey County, you can see that we were up in the low 20s, then we dipped back down. We got as low as 13.41 and 15.4. We do, so we've definitely come down fairly nicely in the Ramsey County. There's some indication it might be ticking back up again. And one of the things that we have to keep trying to think about is, how do we not have a roller coaster ride of decision-making? But we're gonna continue to look at this data. Interestingly, I have had a chance through some Ramsey County folks, they broke down some of the Ramsey County data, and within the county of Ramsey, I have seen some data by city, and one of the highest cities inside of Ramsey County is Maplewood. And Maplewood as a city is up around 27, so it's definitely higher than the Ramsey County average. It's higher than St. Paul. And then, if you look here at Washington County, the latest data shows 14.37, so both are hovering between that 10 and 20 range. But just, just a resource, and this, this has been shared with multiple people, but I, you know, the question had come up, how, and this was as of the first. People had asked during the month of September, what was our data looking like? We had one staff member test positive and eight students test positive. And of those eight students, two were participants in athletics, and six were distance learning only. They were never in person. So all eight of those students were not in school for academic classes, because if you recall, back in September, the high school students weren't having classes in person yet, anyway. So none of the student cases that had happened in September were related to being in school or close contacts in classrooms. And that was the data for the month of September. And just a reminder, I will say, though, things are changing. We are now having, now that school's more open, we today alone had a number of different, a couple of positive cases pop up, but that had larger circles of close contacts with them, and so more students having to self-quarantine. And I, it was changing as I was logging into the meeting today, so I don't have an exact number for you right now. But I will say there's, there's two cases in particular, one at Skyview Middle and one at a Tartan Football Team, where there was a circle of peers that were affected, and, and even a couple of teachers who then have to stay home and self-quarantine because they're close contacts. So I just want to remind you that we have these decision tree pieces here, and our lead nurse, Alicia, is just amazing, amazing at contact tracing, and she's very vigilant. So we have these decision trees that help, like, have you been exposed? Were you a close contact of somebody? And we have one for staff and one for students. So those have been recently shared back with, with district employees as well, so just keeping, keeping that on everybody's radar. So, so that was one piece that I wanted to share with you. Before I, the second piece I want to talk about is naming recommendations. And so I want to pause just really quickly if there's questions about COVID.
Christine, relative to the nine private schools in our district, do we, do we have any information about how they're doing related to COVID?
Um, you mean how other schools?
Yeah, in other words, Hill Murray, how?
Oh, no, we actually don't. You know, I will say that, yeah, because we're not, we're not being given that data exactly. In fact, yeah, we really don't have that data. There's some of it we're able to get through our nurses that work in those sites, but we don't have the latest and greatest numbers on all that either. I would imagine as, you know, part of, I'll say, one of the biggest challenges in talking to, every week I have a meeting with all metro area superintendents, and we do a Zoom usually on a Thursday morning at 7:30, and it's just kind of a touching base on what everybody's dealing with this week. And one of the biggest, hugest challenges everybody's facing right now is staffing concerns across the board, where because of the cautions, the precautions we're taking, if there is a case, and then you need to quarantine all the people that were the close contacts of it, it can really ripple effect pretty quickly into a lot of people having to stay home. And so, and we have to do that, and we have to be safe. But it also has caused some pretty serious staffing shortages in some other schools, and that was something superintendents are really talking about. And for many situations, it's, their, their county level data would say they are able to open up full-time in person, but their staffing issues are not allowing it to happen.
And then just, just one other thought I had, reading the daily papers, I read that some charities, some foundations are putting money into these, what do they call them? Labs or, or pop-up micro labs or something, you know, learning labs, and, and, you know, they're renting space and so on. And that raised some questions with me relative to, really, I mean, these people are working with children, are they, do they all have background checks? Do they, what curriculum are they, are they connected to the public school curriculum? I don't know. Have you, have you superintendents been talking about that at all?
Um, a little bit. What's more common that we've been hearing about are families banding together to create learning pods, that they will socially distance together. There's a real exodus and a real push, I mean, a lot of movement to homeschooling that's been happening, which is always a little bit interesting, because homeschooling requires you to develop your own curriculum and create all your resources, whereas if you just opted for distance learning, you could still have all the district resources and the laptops and all that. But many, many are still opting for distance learning in our district as well, and across the metro, that's been a real common theme people are seeing. And within those new homeschool, pop-up homeschool batches, there's a lot of collaboration where people are getting together to kind of help each other out. But I think that, and I didn't read the story that you're referring to, Nancy, but it might be that there are also some of those learning pods are being developed to help with those homeschool kids. Um, yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, I can see if they're helping with technology and connectivity and broadband and all of that. But, you know, if-
Or homework help, right? That's homework that's already signed by your licensed teacher and whatnot.
Right, right. But if it's, you know, I'm just wondering what the, what the standards are for some of these, these little mini schools that foundations and charities are putting a lot of money into, you know?
Yeah, I know. It's interesting. These are very, very worrisome academic times we're in right now.
Hey Christine, you mentioned, you mentioned Alicia and her, the work that she's doing on contact tracing. And I was thinking that we get her into one of these meetings, one of these times, to show us how she goes about working the contact tracing. But also, I think the summary that you just gave us was really good, too. So I kind of like, was thinking we get her in here, but you did a really good job reporting that out.
Well, either way, we actually have hired two additional contact tracers to work with Alicia. And so that's been really helpful. She's kind of commanding, commanding the effort. But, you know, I'll say this, there's not a single COVID case in our district that is not on Alicia's radar and on Julie's radar. Julie and Alicia have been kind of really championing that work, and they have, they have a running list of not only if there was an exposure, who's the contact and whatnot. To the extent people are willing and able to share, I mean, you also have data privacy, too, where you kind of have to figure out, you know, who, who's willing to share. And we've been trying to have an environment where people feel very, very comfortable sharing. And we never say the name of who has it, but we try to, you know, you know, get, get some connections. And most staff who have, you know, have been very cooperative and wanting to make sure we do the best possible contact tracing imaginable. Anything else on that?
Are we talking? Christine, I did hear about a report that the state, I can't remember if it was MDE or Minnesota Department of Health, was gonna start reporting by schools if there's an outbreak, and I think they're defining outbreak as three to five or something like that. But that they just started that, I believe, Friday. And I'm not, I wasn't clear if it was just public schools, or if it was all schools, or?
I saw, I briefly saw a newspaper article about that, too, and I, I'm not sure if it's private as well. I would imagine so, to the extent that they're, you know, they're brought in the loop about it. So the second thing in my superintendent update, I just want to give time for that COVID, but the second thing I want to talk about briefly is the naming recommendations. And I'm actually gonna let Josh speak a little bit about it, but I'm gonna share my screen again. And Josh, if you could talk maybe a little bit about this process that's gone underway. Remember, we're working on, oh, hang on. Here we go. We're working on the process for naming our elementary school that's gonna be built on the Maplewood Middle School property. So if you could just maybe talk a little bit about the process, Josh, and then I'll scroll down once you kind of talk through how it all began and where it's gone since.
Sure. So back middle of September, we had our first round of community input where we were soliciting names from our community to name the new elementary school Maplewood. From, from that list that came in, we pulled a group of staff together. We are using staff members who are on the elementary design team who helped design the new elementary school in Maplewood and the new Eagle Point Elementary School. They were the staff members who were involved on this, in this naming committee. And they went through the list of names that were submitted. The first round, we had 175 names that were submitted to, to the, to the form that we had out there for the public.
175 different names.
Different names. We had, we had multiple, we had multiples of some. But we had 175 different names that were submitted. From there, the committee went through to select the top five and provided some rationale on why they thought the top five would be good to go with. And then from there, we went out for another round of community input, asking for the five that you see on the screen, asking our community to rank one through five, the names that you see, Maplewood Elementary, Holloway Elementary, Allen Page Elementary, Woodsman Elementary, and Lakewood Elementary. From there, you pull the committee back again, and of the top five choices that were in, the two that had the highest votes from the community were actually Maplewood Elementary and Holloway Elementary. The community, the committee felt that they wanted to recommend to the group the top two choices of Maplewood Elementary School and Allen Page Elementary School. And they provided some rationale for why they went with these two choices. And you can see on your screen there the reasons why they opted to go with Maplewood Elementary and Allen Page Elementary. And then, all along this process, we had past practice of guidance from the school board that talked about what the process should be for naming the new schools. And you can see that the facility shall be given names likely to retain meaning for students and citizens during the projected life of the facility, and shall be consistent with the school district's mission, mission statement. And so we kept coming back to our mission statement of committing each day to develop and empower lifelong learners who thrive in diverse communities. And that is why the committee-
I'll scroll back up.
I believe recommended Allen Pace to present to the board for the official name of our new school. And so this is the information that we gathered and presented to Christine today to bring on for you all to discuss today. And then we're hoping that you all will take action on an official name at the October 27th board meeting.
So, board members, this is a really important conversation. There's been a lot of interest in keeping the name Maplewood because we're, we're losing Maplewood Middle School, keeping it as Maplewood Elementary. But then also, if we are gonna give it the name of a person, obviously, the first African-American Supreme Court Justice, Allen Page, and his, you know, education advocacy. You may know that Justice Page has been a frequent visitor to 622 schools. He reads in our classroom sometimes. He's written and authored a book or two, I think. So he's also somebody that's been familiar to our classroom environments, too.
We also have some staff members at Webster who are Page Scholars as well, some adults who have gone through that program and become Page Scholars. He does have connection to our district for sure.
So I really, I don't know how you want to handle this, Michelle, but what we'd really like is the board to have a discussion. And, and these are the two names that came forward from the committee. But again, as a board, there were other names brought forward as well, and it's really about having a discussion and see if there's any thoughts or consensus from the board on, on where preferences you may have with regard to this name. Part of the challenge is that as construction's underway, there's a real need to get a name on this building that's gonna be built, because there's a lot of documents being developed and, and issues that need to be named and labeled, and it would be really helpful to have the name figured out.
I'll, I'll speak up and say I would, I will, I will vote for Allen Page Elementary based on the rationale that's listed underneath the name. And I don't really think I need to say anything else.
Okay. I'll let you lead this, Michelle, however you want to get input from everybody.
I can add to it as well, that I would also vote for the Allen Page, because it's, you know, kind of moving forward into the future with the children of this community, with it being more diverse over time. And it speaks volumes, and it's kind of setting the tone and the narrative that we want for the community. So Allen Page, I was just kind of researching him some more. So, yeah.
Anyone else? Caleb? Caleb, you're on mute. Caleb, I think you're still on mute somehow. Yep, no. Okay.
Okay, sorry, it was a microphone issue. I agree with Allen Page Elementary. I think he is someone that, that we should honor. I think he's done a lot for our school, and I think he has an inspiring story. So I fully support Allen Page Elementary as a name.
Anyone else?
I'm just curious, Josh, and you may not know this, but you're saying that Maple was, was the top choice for the community members. Do we have any idea, like our diversity of the community members who responded? I'm assuming that everything was anonymous.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that information, Becky. Great question. But yeah, we, all that they were asked to do was to rank the top five choices that were, that were presented.
I really like that, you know, he wasn't, he was a great, you know, Vikings player that's, that's really big here in Minnesota. And not only that, he, he was so into education as well, and it just kind of speaks volumes about obstacles, like Caleb is saying, like, just to have the community figure out who he is and, or learn more about him and his challenges in life, how he overcame them and became who he is, was. I think that would be a great educational learning experience for everyone.
Anyone else?
I was extremely excited when he became a Supreme Court Justice, and I see no reason not to be extremely excited about this.
Um, Nancy, do you want to say anything, I think?
He's a wonderful role model. I, I, you know, twice as many people voted for Maplewood, so there is that. But, you know, relative to the community, but I, I'm, I'm persuaded by the rationale and, and, and the, and the board support for Allen Page Elementary. I could certainly get behind that.
Okay. And actually, it wasn't in the rationale, but the descriptions you guys gave of him coming into 622 classrooms, I think, is meaningful to me. And also, the, the Page Scholars, you know, I don't, I don't know these things. And actually, I did Google him to see if he had a connection to us. that page scholars, you know, I don't, I don't know these things. And actually, I did Google him to see if he had a connection to us. And I felt like he didn't because I checked to see like where was he born and stuff. And I thought, okay, well, he doesn't really have much of a connection, but it sounds like he does. So I think that's great. So is our next step, then we would, we would vote in our next board meeting to officially.
Right, we would bring a formal recommendation forward in the next board meeting, and then you would have an opportunity to vote at that time.
Great.
And and Josh or Christine, is there already an elementary school or middle school named after Alan Page?
I was just wondering the same thing. Do you know, Josh?
I don't, but I can look. I'll do some research here.
I'm not aware of any.
Well, Justice Page Middle School in Minneapolis. It looks like there is one in Minneapolis.
Okay.
I would also be curious, Josh, if in your research, you could just give us an update about what other schools that have been named in our district who have been named after individuals and and why? In other words, Webster, Richardson, Cowan. If you could tell us who those people are and and any information you had about why they chose that name.
Absolutely, we can look. We can look for that for sure.
I also think what we'll do is pull together a more comprehensive bio on Justice Ellen Page so that that can be reviewed by folks as well.
And I don't know, does it make sense to reach out to him to?
Absolutely.
I I already was thinking of that. I wanted to kind of see where the conversation went today and and ironically, I was just in a meeting with him an hour ago, but I didn't mention.
Was he talking about the amendment, the proposed amendment?
No, actually, there is a meeting going on about that right now. I'm not in it because I'm here. But that's a separate conversation. No, I'm actually part of a governor's round table right now to talk about possible big, big picture reform ideas for the state to make it a more racially equitable learning state for our students. And he's in that group with me.
Okay, because there is. I mean, it might be good to bring the board up to speed about, you know, the amendment that he's proposing to change the constitution. To say that students in Minnesota are but expected to receive a quality education instead of.
Yeah, I've sent I've sent the board.
Equal and fair or something like that.
Yeah, I sent the board. I've sent that to you as a board a couple of times over the last year in my board updates to you, but I'll send it again. And it's it kind of just for for right now, there's two people. Justice Alan Page has teamed up with Neil Kashkari, who's the president of the Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank. And they have proposed a constitutional amendment for the state of Minnesota. And it basically, and I'll share the details with you, it basically changes some constitutional language that that basically, instead of basically, instead of offering a quality education to everybody, it it ensures that we will guarantee a quality education. And there's some language that just strengthens our commitment to all learners in the state. And it's it's been in discussions. There's a lot of groups. In fact, right now, in this very moment, they're having another meeting with superintendents to answer questions about it. The the biggest issue and pushback is I think from a lot of school districts and folks is would we get sued then if someone didn't get a quality education from us? Well, lawsuits also make change happen. That's my opinion. And, you know, there's a lot of question out there about, you know, why would we, why do we need this? And what would the tails be to it? You know, I think the intent is good. I think there's just a lot of questions as to what what would that mean, you know, just to kind of randomly change that constitutional amendment without putting funding behind it or any clear expectations with it. So that's kind of what the discussion is happening. But, yeah, he is he's one of the partners, one of the co-authors of this proposed change to the constitution.
And it's controversial. So I mean, if you could just lay out, you know, a little summary about what the controversy is, I think that would be good.
Well, to be honest.
We're aware that, you know. There are opposed to this, so.
Yes, and actually.
A number of education groups are opposed to this.
I I will say I know Education Minnesota is opposed to it. I'm going to actually pull it up right now and show you. Because I've got, I can pull it up right now. I've been in a lot of conversations or emails about, I've been getting a lot of emails about this. Let me just find it real quickly here. So we have. Let's see. So there is Education Minnesota is one group that is opposing it. And I'll just say, I'm not entirely sure why. I haven't had a chance to talk to them about that or whatnot. But one of the things, and I've shared this with Neil Kashkari myself, one of my concerns with it is actually that there's a place in this proposed amendment, I'm trying to pull it up, that's why I'm multitasking here. There's a place in this where they they propose, they take out the word taxation. And I'm a little concerned about that word being removed, and I've shared that with with Justice Page and with Neil Kashkari. I mean, that's just one of my personal questions about that. So, um, hang on, I'm getting close here. I'm going to find it. Okay, here we go. I got it. So this is basically, oops, now I just lost it. Okay, this is, this is the proposed amendment. This is the original education clause in our Minnesota Constitution. And this is the proposed amendment that is authored, co-authored by Neil Kashkari and Justice Ellen Page. And if you see it, the the old version talks about a uniform system of public schools. You know, and and here it says an equal right to quality public education. So basically, it's it's just strengthening that language. Instead of saying we're going to provide the same to everybody, it says, no, we're going to provide everybody, each and everyone, a quality education. And that we are, you know, all children have the fundamental right to quality public education that fully prepares them with the skills necessary for participation in the economy, our democracy, society, as measured against uniform achievement standards set forth by the state. It is the paramount duty of the state to ensure quality public schools that fulfill this fundamental right. I'm not, I will say, I've been in a lot of meetings about this. It's not entirely clear to me what is so controversial. From, I think, other than the fact that, well, what does this mean? And how are we going to be held accountable to this? And what's the standard of measure that we're going to be held accountable? How are they going to measure that accountability? And and what could this, I don't know, what what role is this going to play, the effect that's going to have on schools and teachers and administrators and who knows what? My personal feeling about it. I I'm just speaking for me, just Christine. I don't personally, I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity to consider this. And like I've told the authors myself, where it says here, shall make provisions by taxation or otherwise, that the legislature should do that. My concern is that that piece was removed. And because taxation, I I want to ensure that we also fund public schools in the state of Minnesota. You know what I mean? That it becomes that we are funding education and that we continue as a state to hold that value in in the funding of public education and that that will forever be a priority and written in the constitution of our state that that will happen. So I just don't like to see that word taken away. And it's fine to say provisions by taxation or otherwise. I mean, if they want to find a different funding stream to find public education, it's fine, but I do think that I like that there's funding language in there, but that's the current and existing clause. And I will say AMSD, our Association of Metropolitanary School Districts, is going to be having a meeting. I'm on the executive board of that group, and we're going to have a discussion about to what extent does AMSD want to get behind this proposed constitutional amendment or not. It's really policy language. It's not really a funding change or anything. But I think part of it is trying to figure out why, why people are feeling like it's controversial. I think part of it is just, what does it mean for us? And what's the accountability measures? What what accountability measures might be in place and whatnot? So, yes, his name is behind this topic that you'll see in the news right now. But but I will say, when I brought the concern about taxation to Neil Kashkari somewhat recently, he said, I wouldn't have a problem keeping that in there. We can modify the language. So who knows where this is going to end up? This was deep in, there was, they were deep in discussion about this last winter. And then COVID hit, and it kind of just fell by the wayside that the legislature, I think there was also not a lot of buy-in at the legislature to do this at all. And so I'm not quite sure why. And I'm not sure there would be buy-in this coming year, but that's that's something they're out there advocating for, so.
Well, there are always forces, as you know, at work at the legislature to
Oh, yes.
to to take money away from public schools.
Yep, and that, I will say, is the other thing, too. I did, I did have that conversation with with Justice Page and Neil Kashkari about that. And I, you know, I did, it does say public schools. It doesn't say, because I, you know, me, I, after everything we've had conversations about. I've been really, really advocating that everything we do says public education. But when it says here, paramount duty of the state to ensure quality public schools. So I didn't get the sense, and this was public schools, this is public schools, so that part doesn't seem to be the fact that it's about public schools doesn't seem to be changed, and that hasn't been diluted in this part. It says public education and public schools both in this new proposed measure. And, you know, whereas the other one mentions public schools one time, the new one actually mentions it two times. So I do think there's at least that going for it, so. I'm not sure that it's going to get a lot of traction if, I I don't know, people, for whatever reasons. And Nancy, you're down there, too. Not quite sure what all the discussion is about. But I will say, people who are down there aren't quite sure what the hubbub is about, like, and and actually not quite sure why Education Minnesota isn't in favor of it.
Well, charter schools are public schools.
Right. But we already, but we already have, the language already says public schools in it. I mean, that part isn't different. Yeah, I don't know.
I think that I think that part of the discussion is going to at some point include comments about overreach by the state to determine what quality means in the context of a quality public education. Especially with those charter school groups.
And I think the fact that to go change an amendment in isolation in and of itself, without any other conversation about what are all the tails or what are the layers of it? Seems a bit arbitrary, and I think that's what some people have been saying. It might just feel kind of arbitrary or, you know, how did this drop out of the sky without some other deep work happening, so. I don't feel super strongly about that either way, but I don't have a thing against the proposed amendment either, but I have, I I would I'd be surprised if it's going to get, it didn't get traction last legislative session. I'm not sure that it would this time, but who knows, maybe. But that is something, if you Google Alan Page, you'll see his name associated with this. Because it's something he co-authored, the proposed amendment.
It seems to me that part of the of the real dialogue that that seems to be missing right now is what defines the absence of a quality education. Why aren't we doing something about that? I mean, that's something that those of us on this Zoom call can do in six to two.
Yeah. If I could add one more other comment about Alan Page. Even among people I've heard say they're not in favor of this constitutional amendment. Everyone always couches that with, but but we love Alan Page. I mean, they literally say that. They'll say, yeah, I I'm not, I have concerns about the amendment, but but we love Alan Page. I mean, I've never heard anyone, even people who oppose the idea of a constitutional amendment, have anything against Justice Alan Page. It's more having an amendment and the all the discussions that deep discussions that go underneath it. I have, I've not heard of anyone who has any negative feelings about him as a as a person and as a leader, and his history has been pretty remarkable, so. Just putting that out there.
All right. Thanks, Christine. Is there anything else on your superintendent update?
Nope.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is the revision of policy five two two student sex nondiscrimination.
This is Tricia's baby. It's a really, really long policy, but Tricia can talk about what's going on with all that.
Yeah, so good evening, good evening, everyone. Basically, the changes are as a result of new regulations that went into place in August of this year. Really redefining, and the biggest pieces, if I can give just a highlight of some of the changes, because again, as you've seen the document, it's quite lengthy. Some of the biggest pieces are some definition components that they've refined, narrowing some of the definitions of what behavior constitutes sexual harassment. And then also a formal investigative investigation process that we're to follow. And honestly, as I reviewed the policy, I think it will be very helpful in the work that we do in the event we have some of these complaints that come in that really define that process far more in depth than what our previous policy had in place. And then also allow us for more eyes, if you will, in the process or more voices in the process and versus it having to be one individual investigator who goes through the investigative process, completes the report, and makes a recommendation for what the the formal response is. So we have at least two, if not three or four different members involved in that process. Along with those pieces, some of the other big highlights, if you will, are just the trading components that are required for that. So we have to have at least myself, if not many others. And actually, this past August, we had I would say all but five of our administrators attend the new Title IX training. So that was a great opportunity in August just to get all the updates on the new regulations. And then some different requirements on where we need to post our trading materials and keep record of who has attended those trainings in years past. So really, I I'm supportive of the changes that MSBA has put forth in their model policy to align all the different opponents that have come out as a requirement of the regulations that went into effect mid-August. What that would just entertain questions you may have.
Thanks, Tricia. I see that policy. The policy is nineteen pages long. Can you just tell me, in summary, what the process is for a student if they feel like they've been discriminated against?
Yep, so I I would say one of the biggest changes is the narrowing of the description or the definition of what behavior would be constituted as sexual harassment has been significantly narrowed in this policy. But I want the the board to be very clear in understanding that that doesn't limit our scope in responding to whatever the concerning behaviors are, because if it isn't covered under the Title IX policy, it would be something we certainly have the right and responsibility to respond to under our student code of conduct and some of those pieces. So I think that's some of the biggest feedback that some folks have had is, wow, if we're really narrowing the scope this much, what does that mean? So again, it doesn't limit our response. It just is far more specific as to what behavior falls under the sexual harassment component of the policy. So in short, again, nineteen pages short summary. A student and or somebody on their behalf, parent, etc., would submit a written, a formal written complaint to essentially to me in our particular district. And then there is a process that I would go through in terms of informing both the the accused party and and the person who was filing the complaint of what their, first of all, what the process is in terms of going through the investigation, what their rights are in that process, being forthcoming in that it is not a completely confidential process by some of the the definition that has changed in the new regulations and that some information is allowable to be shared between both parties, because there's also appeals process in this new policy, which was not in place necessarily in our previous policies. And so I would then go through an investigative process, working most often times with building administration, any other parties that would be knowledgeable of whatever that complaint may be. And then write up what my investigative reports are, and then we also have to have two other individuals. So there is also a decision, it's decision maker, like that's the the term, and which cannot be me. So I I would submit that report to somebody else who would be deemed the decision maker, and that role can be filled by a variety of people. And we've had some conversations that can't. a variety of people. And we've had some conversations that cabinet of about who, who may be likely individuals in that process, but I think certainly could change depending upon what the scenario is that we're investigating. That person would then review the information that I have provided in the report. Did make a determination upon that. And then that goes out to both parties. And then at that part, parties have the ability to, to complete essentially an appeal to that decision. That would need to be submitted. And there's certain timelines that outline all those different details of when they would have to do those pieces. And then that appeal would go to yet another person who is not the decision maker, but an appeals decision maker who would then review that information and then make that final determination of, of what the response would be from a district lens.
Great. Thank you. How do students know that? How does students know that they can do this?
So this is a policy that goes out in our student handbook or reference to that is similar to all of our other policies. Part of the piece that we will have the responsibility to do once we've updated the changes in this particular policy is send out notification to families and students that there has been a change because student handbook was already you know, published by the time that the changes had come through. So we will send up another notification and it also has to be posted on our website, both the policy itself, and then also what the training materials are that staff have those who have gone through the training, what those materials are. So I have a hard copy of the PowerPoint and training session that all of our staff who attended the training were able to access. And that has to be publicly posted on our website as well.
Oh, sorry. Carly, just let me ask one more question really quick. Just about the confidentiality, do you feel like that might discourage people from filing if they don't have confidentiality?
Um, I, I, again, I think there's the potential in that, but I think there's also the, the conversation that we have or in would have with administrators as well. If we have people coming forward with a complaint or a concern that again, if it doesn't fall under this scope, we still have a responsibility and obligation. And certainly the want to make sure that we're responding to student behavior that's concerning of any nature through other policies that we may have. So if, if that's something that doesn't necessarily go through the Title IX process, it certainly is something that can be addressed through a student code of conduct and other, other avenues as well.
Okay. Thank you. And Carly, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just looking at letter I. And I see where they can, you know, the guidelines for if it's a, an adult, an employee, but I don't see where it mentions like if another student does it sexually harasses someone.
It, it does apply to both. So it, it, there is employee based components within the policy and then also student to student policy language as well in terms of how we respond to that. And we've had that past practice with our previous policy in terms of, in thankfully, minimally that we've had complaints of this nature brought forward between students, but certainly it's something that we have had processed for and followed through. Again, this process itself and the change in policy have far more detail around what that process actually is than our previous policy. So many more steps in that process. Any other questions?
Yeah. And, and is there any thing around digital online sexual harassment in this? I know it's a lot to read. So if it's not in person, but it's like, you know, online.
Um, it, it would fall in the scope of certainly in consideration that the language that makes it, I'm going to just read it after so I don't get it incorrect, but part of the, the part that has the view from others that it's an, and it's not a view, but the narrowest, more narrow scope of this conduct that's considered actionable under Title IX. And it's only something that we can respond to if it's unwelcome conduct determined by a reasonable person to be so severe and pervasive and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person equal access to an education program or activity. Which is a whole lot of jargon to swallow, right? Like that makes that pretty complex. But in terms of the environment which there, that would take place. So if there's a nexus to the school in terms of a social media component and some of those things, we certainly would have the ability to investigate in that stance as well. But it may be something that falls more under the scope of, does it really align with the sexual harassment definition? Or is it something that's more of a a broader scope of that student code of conduct that we would investigate?
Add to that, Tricia, um, under number one, item B, it says this policy applies to sexual harassment that occurs within this school district's education programs or activities and is committed by a school district employee, student, or other members of the school community. It does not apply to sexual harassment that occurs off school grounds in a private setting and outside the scope of the school districts, education programs and activities. It does not apply to sexual harassment that occurs outside geographic boundaries of the United States. And even if it is a school district program or activity. Now, that's just Title IX, like that's the rule around Title IX, but that doesn't mean we always, we always look into kids come in, you know, there's bullying that happened online at night and we always, and you know that because you do this too in your role. We always look into it and we, we do have ability to have interventions and consequences associated with any and all of that as well. But that particular guidance comes under the Title IX legislation, and that's why that is listed that way. But that doesn't, it doesn't mean we wouldn't intervene if there was a concern, you know, about students bullying each other online anyway. Because we already do intervene in that, in that element.
Yeah. And actually, I know Kim would probably know better than anyone. I think we have a policy that's specific to online. You know, potentially online harassment, don't we, Kim?
We have the bullying and harassment.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else on this policy? Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Tricia.
Thanks.
Trish, do you have anything else before I move on to the next agenda item?
Nope, I'm, I'm good. I think again, the, the policy, as you can see, is super lengthy. So it is very detailed. If you time to dig through all, all of the 19 pages in depth. And I also have some different resources and templates that we'll be using in the event we, we go through this process that I certainly am happy to share with the board as well, just so you can see what some of those templates would look like. That would be helpful.
You know, I keep thinking about Teresa Oje. She's missing a 19 page policy tonight. She, Carly, Teresa was always the person who would read every single word and, and and look at the details, which we loved because it also brought our attention to those details too. But this is one of the longest policies we've ever had. But I just want to add to that Tricia has already been our Title IX coordinator. So thankfully she's been, you know, really staying current on all these issues and topics as the law has changed and she's quite our, our local expert on the topic. So we're lucky for that.
All right. Thanks, Christine. And thanks again, Tricia. Next on our agenda, we have proposed tax levy, and I'm guessing that's Randy.
Yep. So anyway, remember at the September board meeting, you did a resolution passing the proposed tax levy at the maximum. That was to give us the most flexibility in you know, setting our levy limited amount. So tonight I just want to show you where it's at. And remember, this is what the proposed tax statements will be based upon that our stakeholders will receive in November, right around Thanksgiving. Uh, but then also remember that we will be doing a final levy certification at our December meeting. And that's actually what taxes will be based upon. And so, you know, this is the start of the fiscal year 2122 budget. And so Josh, am I able to share my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. So if you remember at the proposed at the proposal, when we did our certification at the maximum in September, it was about one point, almost $1.3 million increase. Um, and I'm just going to show you this and we'll go over a couple of highlights here. So right now it's, it's gone down. So it's about an $800,000 increase from our current year right now, or about 1.49%. Uh, this doesn't mean that people's taxes will go up by 1.49% or percent. It's just the amount that we're actually levying, um, you know, on our stakeholders. And again, remember their home values will determine the counties and the cities also, of course, are levying. And so based upon that mixture, will determine what people's will be, will be taxed at. But just at this point, remember one of our goals after our referendum passing, et cetera, and, and we've kept our, our taxes pretty well flat over the last, you know, five years, except for when our operating referendum passed. And then also when our bonding referendum passed, it jumped up for this current year. So right now with the proposal being about a 1.49% over last year, because various properties, um, the tax base is increasing. We're getting some new businesses coming in, et cetera. Based upon this, if their home values were to stay the same, I would, I would assume at this point in this juncture that our stakeholders would not see a tax increase because of this. It should be pretty, pretty well flat. And so again, you can kind of see here that our general operating, our general operating tax certification here is actually going down by about 1.23%. Community Ed is, is taking a little bit of a jump here just simply because of a, a school age care adjustment. And of course, our debt service is going up a little bit because of our, you know, our bonding that we've done. But you take all these things into consideration. And again, we've remained pretty much flat here. And again, with our, with our tax base being growing at between 68% over the last three years. I don't see this. It'll be interesting to see what happens when people get their proposed tax statements, but I'm willing to bet that you know, this won't, this won't be much of an impact, if anything, to our stakeholders on their actual property taxes, their school district portion. So with that, I will entertain any questions that you may have. So this, this may go down a little bit more too before our final. We'll just have to see what exactly happens. But again, remember it, it'd drop about 600,000 based upon when we did our maximum, maximum certification at the September meeting. So, so anyway, I think we're in a good place.
All right. Thanks, Randy. Any, Steve, do you have something?
I was just gonna say, as long as Randy keeps saying we're in a good place, that works for me. I've learned, I've learned to trust Randy quite a bit.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else? Okay, then I'm going to move to the next agenda item. Okay. Um, next on our agenda, we have the NSBA conference. So that's the annual conference this year. It's April 10th through 12th in New Orleans. Last year, Becky and Nancy were scheduled to go in Chicago and it was canceled due to COVID. So we're not sure what's going to happen this year and they haven't put out their information yet. But my understanding is we wanted to have a discussion so that if they do put out the information, because the hotels always sell out so quickly that we will already have had this conversation, which we normally have this time of year anyway. And Kim, did I miss anything?
No, I think you hit it all. That's perfect. Yeah. Usually, like you say, usually we know and registration takes place in like another week. And Michelle's right, everything just sells out so quickly. So as this is the time when you have your initial conversation to see if anybody's interested in attending, assuming that it will be an in-person conference.
Yeah. And the information around our school board budget is also in board book. You know, the typical cost for the conference as well as our budget.
I have a question. Are we able to reserve spots for the convention and hotel rooms without actually assigning a person to that? I was just thinking about, okay, so we have to know who would be going.
Right. You have to do the registration and immediately go to housing right away. We can't say like, we want two spots. It is by person.
Okay. Would they give out a refund if it was to be canceled due to COVID?
Yes, like last year, we had a refund for Nancy and Becky.
Okay.
And you never end up paying for the hotel rooms if there's not an actual in-person conference anyway. So.
Doesn't it seem highly unlikely that it would happen?
I think so. Or if it, if it happens, it'll be a virtual conference and you can just attend from home and, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like it's pretty unlikely at this point. Large conventions, I can't see coming back anytime real soon.
I, I can't, I can't even imagine flying at this, at this point. You know, given, given our worldwide pandemic.
Yeah.
In the past, sorry, in the past, have we ever had a, a newly elected school board member and go to an NSBA conference four months after they're appointed or after they take their seat?
Not as much as I can recall. No. Usually board members want to give it a, a good year that they're on the board so that they understand protocol of being a board member before they do take that opportunity to go to a national conference. Of course, there's plenty of opportunities with state conferences and all the professional development that the superintendent provides for new board members.
And there's lots of school boards who send their entire board every year. Many of them, many do that. So it's, there's not a rule against it. And, and again, I think if it ends up being a virtual conference, you know, I think everybody who wants to should go because it's virtual and it's a great opportunity to be able to, to be in it if you want to do it. It's, it's great professional development, at least to see sort of what school districts around the country are grappling with and working on.
That would be wonderful. If everybody could go and attend virtually, be perfect.
Okay. So do we need to make any decisions today? I mean, I know we're not voting on anything, but do we need to get some sense of how many people would be interested if it were in person and some sense of how many people would be interested if it were virtual?
That would be good if we could do that today. And then also as soon as we get information released from NSBA, I'll forward it out to all of you. But at least you've had this initial conversation about it to see who is interested. And we can kind of go from there.
I'll start. So I'd be interested in going either way. So if it were in person or virtual, I love the conference. I couldn't go last year because of a scheduling conflict, but I would love to go.
Yeah, I would be interested either way.
I'd be interested to go if it was virtual.
Last year, did it, or, or this past April, how much did it cost for the virtual conference?
Well, the actual conference normally, just like for the conference itself is eight to $900.
And that price didn't go down when they switched over from in-person to virtual?
They didn't, they didn't offer a virtual option. They just canceled. So there wasn't an opportunity for board members. I think it was because COVID was so new at that time that they just had to quickly cancel. So online was.
I would be interested going in person or virtually.
Anyone else? Eve, Carly?
Virtual. I should be down that way though in Alabama around that.
I should be down that way though, in Alabama around that.
Eve, what about you?
I have no interest.
Okay, thanks. Um, so any other discussion on this topic? So Kim, I wrote that down. I don't know if you wrote it down as well, but yeah. Um, any other discussion on this? I guess we'll have to wait and see if it opens up and if it's gonna be virtual or in-person, so. All right, the next agenda item is, oh, you know what? Before we move off though, I did want to mention though, the MSBA conference is virtual this year and it's in January. And I, I think I sent out an email a while back, um, Kim forwarded it, that it would be nice for us if we could get somebody on the district director, um, on the MSBA board. So they vote periodically. I don't know what the term is, if it's two years or three years or four years. But, you know, the representative for our district has been Madam Edi for as long as I've gone. So, and that's been 10 years. So it seems like we should rotate. And I think part of the reason why it's always Madam Edi is because they show up and they throw their name in the hat and we don't. So it'd be nice if we could show up at MSBA and get one of our representatives on that, um, board. I think it does matter. You know, it does give us visibility to things that we don't otherwise have. It doesn't give us, you know, a place at the table. So, um, you know, for MSBA, it would be great if our board members could go and we could elect somebody to that board. I would be happy to support anybody who wanted to do that from our board. Um, so just throwing that out there.
Can I add a comment to that, Michelle? Um, one thing that, um, I think is really important, you know, I'll just speak from my lens as a superintendent. When I, um, when I get involved with metro or state level work, um, it's not just for visibility and putting our name out there. It's to watchdog issues that will affect us and make sure we are represented. Um, just, and I know you meant that too, but I wanted to add that because a lot of times when decisions are made and moved forward by districts that are very demographically different than we are, linguistically different than we are, um, it's, I, I feel like it's just part of, part of why I'm so passionate about trying to make sure to be, have a seat at the table. Um, to quote Hamilton, to be in the room where it happens, um, is because decisions are made often by small numbers or small groups of people. Um, and they don't always reflect the priorities of our district and, and other places as well. So it's about making sure we're representing our students and the needs of our students and families, um, in, in broader organizations where decisions and recommendations are being made. So just wanted to add that layer as well, because I think it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's good exposure, it's good, all that. But it's also really, really fighting for what our kids need. And, and you know, MSBA comes up with a, uh, the, a platform every year, legislative platform. What are the priorities gonna be? AMSD does, MAS, other groups do. And, um, I'll say this, and, and some of you have been in those groups before too. I, I fight really hard to make sure the needs of 622 students and families are at the table and get into the final language. And I think that's part of connecting to broader organizations. So just wanted to say that.
Yeah, actually, the delegate assembly, which I know Steve and Nancy and I believe Caleb have all attended, um, the resolutions that are brought to us there, I know they go first through the board, you know, the MSBA board. And then the board, if you recall, puts a little note, this has been approved by the board or this is not approved by the board. And it really sways how the rest of us vote on that. So I think like Christine's saying, having a voice in those conversations would be great for our district. And again, I just think having one district represent our full, you know, the collection of districts for so long is probably not a good thing for our district. So I think we need to jump in there.
I would be glad to support anybody who wants to do that. But it wouldn't be a good fit for me because I find that group to be so conservative that I would have a hard time working with them and, and functioning with them there. It's one of the problems I find with the delegate assembly too, is that those resolutions, other than the ones that are carried forward year after year after year after year with no discussion or review, are usually so conservative. They've been a lot of times written to, to meet the small needs of a, of a school district in, in rural Minnesota that is having trouble with funding or something. And, and there's never any discussion over the priority of equality education or equity issues or anything like that. And I would, personally, I would just not be a good fit for that group.
Is there anybody on the call that, um, really feels strongly about being a part of that? Uh, maybe we can start identifying the people on the board that would like to be considered. And we can figure out, you know, who that may be and how we can support you and plan ahead instead of in January, seeing who can and can't show up. If we all get together and champion someone, um, let's start doing it now, like Michelle brought it up. So if you want to do it, you know, maybe next month when we get together like this, you can tell us. Um, or even today, if you want to do it, let's start figuring it out now.
Yeah, I think that's right, Ben. And I'll just add that the way that we get somebody on that board is to go to the conference, to the meeting where you elect the person. So if we had our full board show up, our candidate would be a shoo-in.
Right. Now, and, and so we know when the meeting is and we can get there and plan ahead and be ready for it now. We can start talking about it.
It would very likely be a virtual meeting. So even if you can't stay for the whole conference, if we can say, hey, show up at this time and at this hour, jump on the Zoom because we're gonna need your voice.
Yeah, great. So we can get those details over the next couple of months. And it sounds like the board members would be willing to get on that call. And like Ben's saying, is there anybody who's willing to do it? And I'm, like I said, I'm happy to support anybody doing it. And I would also do it myself if nobody's interested, but I'm happy to support any of you to do it.
I, I wouldn't mind doing this, just that I feel like I would prefer to be more fluent in our conversation. So, um, I don't think I mind doing it. I kind of like what Christine said about just being some eyes and ears so we can know what's going on. And I'm almost open to learning things, it's just that I want to be fluent. Um, my, my plate lightens around that time, but not until December. You know, what do you guys think?
Okay, thanks Carly. Anybody else?
Um, Michelle, do you know how often that position would meet?
I do not, but I can do some, you know, looking into it.
Okay.
Okay, so I think like Ben suggested, maybe let's think about it. And then the next opportunity we get, let's talk about it. And we'll get some details around when exactly we need to be present. And thank you for everyone who's voiced support for it. I think it would be great. I'll stop saying that I think it would be great. And, uh, next agenda item, anything else on this one? Okay, the next agenda item is superintendent's goals.
Okay, great. I'm gonna share my screen again. And just a reminder, um, every year at the beginning of the school year, um, we just take a few minutes to go over, you know, my core goals and, and areas of focus for the coming year. And, um, and then I kind of present them to you as, you know, in a work session like this. And we kind of make sure there's, um, you know, nothing missing. And we follow the guidelines that have been put together by, um, jointly by MSBA and MAS. They recommend that a superintendent have about two to three district goals that are district-wide focused and usually one to two personal professional development goals. And so we've just followed that model. This is my sixth year here and that's what we've been following since I arrived. And so this will be my sixth time doing this with you. So I'm gonna share my screen, um, and just walk through this draft with you. Um, you'll recognize the template. Uh, it's kind of a lot like what I've done in the past. Um, but obviously, um, I think first and foremost, uh, so these are the district level goals. Number one, I have just COVID-19, successfully leading our, our district through this pandemic. And as I saw it, I saw three kind of buckets of, of work under that. Uh, health and safety, of course, ensuring our district follows MDH, MDE protocol with regard to all aspects of health and safety. Um, and I just named some of those, cleaning, sanitizing, PPE, social distancing, our screening and include exclusion, um, work, contact tracing, transportation, um, and that we use data to drive our decision-making. Um, and the second part of that is communication. Ensure inclusive and transparent communication with all stakeholder groups throughout this pandemic and seek ongoing input feedback from staff, families and students. Ensure strong collaboration and consistency across our 622 programs and regular communication and engagement with our school board. Um, and I know, um, and I know that, and there's a capital R, I'm gonna take that out. I know that, uh, it's been a really wild ride up till now. And I think this fall, being in a kind of situation where, um, so much has been left to local control. Um, you know, to the extent that I have or haven't done a good job with each of these areas right now, they're absolutely a top priority, including, and I think especially including communication right now. Making sure everybody feels like they're getting the information they need. They're allowed, they're getting input in the way, um, that they feel is meaningful and being listened to as well. Finally, academics, um, and I just put in here, maximize every possible resource to ensure a high-quality learning experience for each and every learner. And I feel really strongly that, um, you know, academics is one of the greatest challenges. I said, we are in really, I feel, dangerous academic times right now. Um, there's a lot of lost learning that's been happening. And I feel like part of what our job to do in a district is to make sure we are doing everything possible to serve every learner. And, you know, the conversation we had about shifting the, the secondary hybrid model, was largely looking at every learner. Um, the sheer numbers of students we have, like in that online program, we can't set them aside and focus on the hybrid kids over those kids. And we have to figure out, how do we do it all really, really well? So trying to continue to, um, use every possible resource to really do the best work we can do. So, um, that's, I'll, I'll go through all of them, then you guys can come back and offer feedback if you have any. So COVID is the first bucket. The second bucket is facilities planning and implementation. That's been on there for a couple of years now. It will continue to be on there. Um, I particularly lead 622 through pre-planning, design, construction, transition phases of facilities master plan, including boundary changes. I underlined that part because that is going to be a key piece of our work this year. We've got to determine the new boundaries, um, by, by this spring for fall of '22. And so, um, there's gonna be a lot of, of communication work, leadership work that's gonna have to go into that. Um, and so leadership, that's the same as I had on here from last year. Communication, um, making sure that we're including and, and considering all of our, uh, involvement of all the different groups and stakeholders with regard to that. And boundary changes is, is the first layer that's gonna get really dicey and tricky. Um, but then next year, we'll be getting into that whole staffing of how you properly, and we're already starting down this road of how do you, how do you gear up to close a school? And all of that work is, is beginning already. Um, but that is, um, obviously a really big piece of, of this whole district reform we're doing right now. The third bucket is student achievement. Um, and this looks, uh, a lot, oh wait, no, I'm sorry. Oh, I put four in here and I apologize. I didn't do that very well. Look at that. Um, so there's, um, a student achievement. And if you recall, last year it was tricky because we didn't even, some of this information, you know, our, um, MCAs for third grade and eighth grade weren't in yet. Um, we're still finalizing graduation rates, um, the, that are from the state of official record and all of that. But, um, obviously, uh, increase our learner outcomes through our strategic plan guided by our, um, oh my gosh, look at this. I might've had a different version. Um, I'm sorry, uh, measured, so, oh, there we go. Sorry, strategic plan. And then, oh, that's it. And then success will be measured through the evidence of increased student achievement by measured by our world's best workforce plan. These include kindergarten readiness, third grade reading, eighth grade math, graduation rates and reduced achievement gap. And these are the same areas that I had on the, on the goal sheet from last year. And I would imagine will continue for, for future years as well. And then equity, um, equity we had put on here last year as well. So I did add a fourth one, but I just feel like, yes, it's embedded in all the other ones, but I feel like it just needs to have its own standalone engagement of our diverse learners. And I added that using the equity lens at the bottom here to facilitate, uh, facilities and boundary planning as well. Because that really is critically important. It also is part of COVID planning. It's part of everything we do. But I felt like it really made sense to have it as a standalone. So I did put four goals there, but. And then professional goals, um, continue advocating for our district among metro and state leaders. Um, and that's what I talked a little bit about a few minutes ago. And obviously with my doctoral studies program, continuing to integrate and apply new learning in my role as a superintendent. So, um, those are the key areas. I think, I think largely it looks the similar to what I had last year, um, with the addition of COVID. I felt like COVID is a big enough deal that it needs to be its own, um, standalone goal. And how we pull through this pandemic, I think part of, you know, it's gonna take a lot of leadership, a lot of decision-making and a lot of database decision-making along the way. So, um, with that, I just want to open it back up to all of you. Um, these are always a draft until I talk to you about them. And, um, if you feel like those are four good buckets to be focusing on, um, or if you see something, um, I mean, obviously there's many, many, many other things that we do. But, you know, as far as goals, we're supposed to kind of have three. I have four that I put in there, but. Thoughts, comments, feedback? I'll just add, if I could just reiterate again, communication is a top priority. And I'm gonna continue to reflect on what's gone really well, what, where is there room for improvement? Um, but I specifically put in there too, that, um, communication and engagement with the school board. Especially, we're gonna have new members of our school board this year. Uh, making sure we really, really are, are tightly connected with each other about all decision-making. Sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. I was just gonna say, I really like the COVID-19 goal and the focus on those three areas. Um, and making those a priority because it seems like that's the whole world right now. And there, it's so hard. And I don't envy you for having to do all that work and, you know, around health, safety, communications and academics. And I, you know, I hope we get it right to the extent, you know, that, you know, that we can. Um, I'm also excited to look at the boundaries work this year. And, um, I know we've had that coming up for a while. I'm excited to do that, to get, to put that issue behind us. And always student achievement and equity are great goals. So thanks for that.
I think they're great goals as well. Like they're really realistically happening all at the same time. You have the COVID-19 with, we still have to have student achievement while there are facilities being built. And, uh, equity, and we still have to maintain our standards for equity. So I think it's awesome.
And underlying all of this, um, of course, is, is our, our work to sustain our enrollment, right? I mean, I mean, um, this is the way, this is the way our enterprise happens is each, each student comes with, you know, six or $8,000 in his little backpack, you know what I mean? And if we lose, um, those, those, um, students, it's, it's very serious for the whole district, so.
It's a very serious concern. And I'll say this, um, I do believe that managing the COVID pandemic well can help us keep as many students as possible. And that gets at being able to provide the best possible learning experience because that is what's gonna keep people here is if they feel like they're getting a good education. But I will say, um, it's a real concern. We are down 250 students over, about, below projections right now. And, uh, in talking to other districts, everyone else is too. There's a such a move towards private schools and homeschooling right now, uh, across the metro for sure. And that's been a really big point of conversation we've all been having. And our hope is students come back once we're able to reopen schools again, but it's been really hard. But I appreciate that you brought that up Nancy, because that is really, and you know what, I think I'm gonna, I'm going to add a little note under the COVID section, just watching enrollment, because I do think that, I will say, a little bit is a little bit out of our control because we have a lot of private schools open full time around us, and so we're going to lose some people and have many, many students of that, but obviously to continue to monitor it and do everything possible to kind of keep people here.
I was going, I was going to say too, a lot of times we have challenges, we have, we have a challenge as a board to actually find criticism for you whenever we review you every year. I think you excel at the goals that you made, make for yourself. Adding the COVID bit is, it's like, it's going to be, you already know it's really hard. So adding, having like the four goals that you have is a huge challenge. And so, you know, I think, I think you, I think you, if anyone can, can manage those goals. So you have, you have our, we have your back.
I appreciate that, I think regarding any difficult, the really difficult and hard work that you do, and I think about our facilities work, right? I mean, the planning that's gone into that, the ticket to success is communication and transparency. And I feel like as soon as there's any lack of trust that those things are happening, that's when things turn sour. And so it will continue to be a high priority for me that people feel like they can see what's happening behind the curtain and what's happening, you know, up here in my office right now, and what we're doing, and the conversations we're having, and all of us on the board. You know, it's not required by law to be live streaming a work session like this. But I do like that we are, I think it's really great to be able to like show people the conversations we're having too, so.
Okay, anything else on the goal?
Could I make one other comment? So this is my sixth year, and as you know, our contracts are in three year increments. And so, and I've already begun, I mentioned this to Michelle, typically, we, assuming you want to keep me, and I'm here to tell you I do want to stay, it's always a good idea to negotiate that next three year contract earlier in the school year rather than later. Otherwise, the community begins to wonder if you're staying or going. And that, that happens a lot in superintendencies, and so I will just let you know that I'm just beginning to look at that, and Kim's constantly reminding me, hey, you gotta, you gotta get your contract organized here. So it's just been so busy with COVID to ever think about that. But, but I do want, I think especially because of COVID, I would want to give the community a strong message that I'm planning to stick around. And I do plan to stick around, by the way, so we can talk about that in the, going forward. But based on what I'm probably going to do is just set up some initial meetings with Michelle and perhaps Nancy as our vice, you know, vice, is that what we call you, vice chair? Is that the right name? I think, is it a vice chair? Yeah. Maybe just as an initial way to do it, a lot of superintendents, when they go down this road, they kind of start those contract conversations right away with, you know, with your board chair and vice chair. And I remember when I first got hired into this district, you know, I had my contract conversation was with Teresa, I think, and Steve, if you remember Steve down in H R that one day, so, I mean, it's often done that way, so I'll continue moving forward with that conversation as well.
All right, thank you, Christine, any other comments, questions?
Okay.
May I add, may I add one thing about boundary changes?
Yeah.
We will plan to have a timeline and some guiding principles to you all next month. So you can kind of look at how we're thinking we're going to be moving about these next few months to announce in May. I will have information to you all next month at this work session.
Great, thanks. Okay, our next agenda item is Board Officer Committee Discussion. So Kim had sent out to everyone the Board Officer History as well as the Committee Preference Sheet that has current, the folks who are currently serving on those committees. So this is our initial conversation, and can you say a little bit about that timeline on all of this?
Sure, absolutely, so you kind of have two conversations. The first is a Board Officer Conversation, meaning who you will elect in January. That happens every January at the first meeting in January, it's called the Reorganization Meeting. So you'll want to consider who you want on your Board Officer Group, which consists of a Chair, a Vice Chair, a Clerk, and a Treasurer. And those individuals then serve in that role for the calendar year. So they would take, it would take place officially at that first January meeting, and then run until December 31st. And then as far as committees go, there are certain committees that are either required by by law, or by bylaws of a committee in which a board member serves on. And so we've listed those, and what we're doing is we're taking a look to see who has an interest. Right now, it's just more of an interest conversation. So we'll talk tonight, this will also be discussed again at the November 10th Work Study Session. And then we're going to be looking for a final, kind of a final last conversation about it in December, because this will all be taken place and voted upon in January.
Thanks, Kim. So any chance somebody can share that committee's spreadsheet or spreadsheet on Zoom? So that we could quick talk through that? Yeah, I don't know if you guys on the board, if you had a chance to look at this, but, you know, for advisory, the first committee there, and we have Ben in that position, and I don't know Ben, if you're still interested, or if you'd be interested another year, or if someone else might be interested.
My eyes are so bad. I used to think I have the best eyesight on the planet, but now they're really bad. Oh, you're awesome, thank you. I, okay, here's, here's my thought. I thought we had made a decision last year that we would trade off every year in advisory because it's a monthly meeting that's two hours long.
Yeah.
So like Teresa finished, and I started this year. And then by this time next year, somebody else would take over for me. But if that's not what we're gonna do.
I think that's still the case, I think the issue is we're looking for somebody who would be interested for January or for September 1st, 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're still, you're still in it, Ben, until June 30th.
Oh yeah, I'm not leaving, I'm not going anywhere. I got it for the rest of the.
Yeah, this is like looking for that person possibly in September of 2021.
Okay.
So is there anybody who is interested in advisory? But it sounded like your preference would be then to rotate off in June 30th?
Yeah, I think for committees like these, we should really try to rotate off and give other people shots at it. You know, my one hesitation is it's good to have kind of continuity. I'd done this advisory before as a citizen, or as a parent for three years, and I know a lot about it, so I can easily like pass it on and tell you more about what it entails. Again, it's, it meets monthly, it's usually about two hours at the beginning of the month. And it's almost like the school board only, it's like pre-board. So a lot of the topics that we'll get have been talked about already by advisory, just to kind of like provide us with some information, some opinions on where things should go, and to get like feedback. And the committee's made up of teachers and principals and parents and community members like, one of the leaders from Century College, he's always at those meetings. But.
Don't forget students too.
And now, yeah, there's students there too, exactly, so it's a really lively group with a lot of cool opinions.
Okay, so it sounds like this, is anybody volunteering right now for this one? Or we, I mean, we're going to come back to this conversation again, but is there anyone who's interested? Okay, we'll come back, you know, under preference rankings where there's blue and red text, the red means the position's available. And if it's blue with no red, then there's somebody already serving in that board. So the next one is 916, and that's blue with Michelle, and that's because it's a four year term. So it's, I'm in the first year of that four year term. The next one is Finance Advisory Committee, and we have Caleb with Becky as an alternate, and then there's red there. So we know that one's available. So the Finance Advisory Committee, is there anybody who is interested in stepping into that one? It looks like it meets four times per year.
I'm willing to stay with that committee if, if no one else on the board is seeking the Treasurer position.
Okay, thanks Caleb, anybody else on that one? Okay, great. Kim, are you taking notes on that?
I am, I think we also need to look for an alternate for that one too.
Oh, okay. What about an alternate? We'll keep that open for now, I guess, unless somebody.
I've been on the, I've been on the Finance Advisory Committee, the very first one we had 12 years ago or something, so I'd be glad to serve as an alternate.
Great, thanks Steve. Okay, and next we have Ben, it's on the Educational Equity, but that one's just the blue because it's a two year term. So that one's not open right now, and Ben, you're comfortable continuing that? Yeah, okay, and the next one is Student Board Representative Mentor, and that one has the red text, so that's available if Ben wants to stay there, or if somebody else is interested.
Manny and Evan, they're seniors, right? So we would have two new representatives in September, right?
Actually, so Manny and Evan will stay on, right, they're going to stay on through June of 2021. And then beginning July, actually, wouldn't really take place until September of 2021. We'll have two new reps at that point.
If nobody else wants to do it, I'll stay on.
Okay, so we'll keep Ben on unless somebody else. Okay, and then the next one is a Welcome Back Barbecue, and sadly, Becky is not running for reelection. So that position will be available, is there anybody who's interested in that? What is O A C C?
It's the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce. They help, along with the school board, put on this annual barbecue for all school district six two two employees after Christine does the Welcome Back for all states.
I would like to do that so I can get to know more of the school districts.
Great, thanks Carly. I think that it's kind of a difficult job because it takes a lot of coordination, but I think we can probably tap Becky to help us get the information we need to make that work. So thanks again Carly, and thanks Becky for doing it the last couple of years. Next, we have New Board Member Mentor, which we will need. So that's one position, anyone interested in that?
I'll volunteer.
Thanks Ben.
I'm going to tell you, Kim is really good at it too.
Yes, we know. Okay, anyone else interested in that one, or we'll put Ben? The next one is Ramsey County League of Local Governors, Caleb with Michelle as an alternate, and that one is available. It's a one year term, in a second year of a one year term, one year term. Anyone interested in that one? Or Caleb, are you interested in staying on it?
It doesn't really meet often, and I can stay on it, but I'm definitely happy to move to something else.
I think maybe that would be good for me to start, you know, and not get too much, because as we go further down, I think I want to, Caleb, I might, I'll take that one off your hands.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, thanks Carly.
And then Michelle, we'd also need an alternate, maybe Caleb would be interested in filling in as an alternate? Okay.
Okay, perfect, thanks. All right, and then we have A M S D, and Nancy with Caleb as an alternate is what we have there, and that has the red text, so we, so that position is open. I know last time we talked about this position there, well, I'm not sure the level of interest. Nancy, are you interested in continuing with this committee?
Yes, I'm interested in continuing.
Okay. Okay, Nancy, I'm also somewhat interested in this, but I'm not gonna, you know, if you want to keep it, that's fine with me, but would you want to be an alternate, or do you want to be the rep?
Well, I prefer to be the rep.
Okay, you'd be the rep then, and I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
If that's okay, is that okay with you Caleb? Because Caleb, you're currently the rep.
And Michelle, we could certainly both, you know, attend, you know, there's no.
Yeah, of course, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thanks Nancy, thanks Caleb. And then this one is Minnesota State High School League Region Four, it's blue text, and so that one is not turning over, it's the second year of a four year term. It's the second year of a four-year term. And the NSBA Conference is the next one, which we just discussed. So I think that's it for this. And thank you, was that Christine who was scrolling through that? Thank you for doing that. Oh, who was it, Josh? Okay, thanks Josh. Okay, so then the other thing we need to do is the Board Officer Discussion. So there's a document for that. Josh, do you mind sharing that one as well? Okay, so this one has the history of, you know, the positions on the board. And you know, obviously everyone's a director, and then we appoint the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Clerk, and the Treasurer. So I know Caleb suggested that he's interested in being a Treasurer. And I know that we've connected that with that Finance Committee. I know it's not a requirement, but we don't vote on this tonight, so we don't make final decisions. But I guess we're just gauging interest. So do we have other folks interested in Treasurer? Wait, do we have folks interested, Nancy?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, the only position that really matters is the Chair. And I would hope Michelle would continue on as the Chair. I, I just think for continuity reasons, and I think you're doing a, you know, a really good job. And I don't know if you consider continuing on, but you know, that's my thought about that.
Thanks Nancy, I appreciate it.
Sure.
But I'm still going to ask about the other position Nancy, so. Anybody interested in Clerk? So I, Becky's our Clerk currently. Right Becky?
Yes, and that is an important job because there's a whole lot of stuff that has to be signed. I mean, none of our stuff would be official if it weren't signed, so it is important.
That's right. So anyone for Clerk?
Thank you for your, the Clerk position, do you have to sign things every month?
You do sign papers at every meeting, and then sometimes Caleb, what happens is that there are things that will be prepared after a meeting. So Becky often will have to come in the next day after a meeting. So it's somebody that has to have a schedule that's flexible enough where they can come into the office for signatures.
I can clerk.
Ben volunteered for Clerk, anybody else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If I wanted to, does it have to be one? Oh, you know what, that was the last document. It was just, I wanted to get involved with the Equity. Would I be able to join Ben with that? I'm sorry to backtrack, but would I be able to join Ben sometime?
Yeah, I don't suspect there would be any problem with you joining Ben at any of those meetings. I think the Equity Group only meets like twice a year.
Well, that, that particular Equity, that particular group, by the way, it references our collaboration with Madam Edi. It's that partnership. It's not, it's not our general Equity, our Equity work is every day. And there's lots of different layers to all of that. That just specifically is about the, the shared position with Madam Edi Schools.
Okay, well, just let me know if you ever need me, Christine.
Absolutely, and you know, a really good place to actually think about Equity is in the Advisory Group.
Oh.
Teaching and Learning. Ben's on that till September, but we'll be thinking ahead about who, who would replace him there afterwards. So that might be a good opportunity to think about too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, actually Carly, I'm going to second that because the Advisory, they bring all the curricular questions and things. And I don't think we had anybody volunteer for it. So maybe you'd want to consider that.
I do, I do, I do, I do.
All right, we'll put you down. Thanks. Okay, what about Vice Chair? Anybody interested in Vice Chair?
I would be interested in Vice Chair. I've been the Vice Chair a lot, but you know, I'm still willing to be, you know, given my seniority here. The backup plan.
Okay, thanks Nancy. Anybody else interested in Vice Chair? Okay, and Chair? Anybody interested in Chair?
You are, right?
Yes, I will continue as Chair if that's a possibility, I guess.
I have to say through this COVID era, you've just done a wonderful job, Michelle. I mean, all of that communication and those letters, they all are very well done. And I don't, I don't think it's ever been a more challenging time to be Chair. And you've just stepped up, and I really appreciate it.
I echo that Nancy. I echo that. Michelle has really handled, like, it's like drinking from a fire hose. So much communication with such attention to detail and really thoughtful responses. And I just, I echo what you just said Nancy.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you Michelle.
And I think the fact that, you know, you've got three kids in the district, Michelle, and you know, you you have, you know, your heart and souls with the district, and I just think it comes through in your communication, so.
Okay, thanks a lot, you guys. Anybody else for Chair? If not, then I think we can move, I know Kim's taken note of it, and we'll talk about it again, and then we'll vote, I believe is the process. Is that right, Kim? We talk again and then we vote.
Right, what we'll all do is all update the sheets. You can take another quick look at it at the November study session. And then maybe even another quick look at it at the December work session. And then in January, we'll be ready at the organizational resolution.
Okay, I think this is the smoothest these discussions have ever gone in my experience of the board. But you know, sometimes using the technology is actually helpful. You know, because you can manage that conversation electronically, but anyway.
I just want to say, yes, in the past, you know, for Carly's benefit, there've been a lot of squabbling about, about these positions. And a lot of hard feelings and, you know, I mean, really. And we tried a rotation one time, that didn't work. So leadership is a funny thing. You know it when you sit, and Michelle is just a fine leader, and I appreciate it. I appreciate it so much.
Same here.
All right, thanks, good. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is Board Check-ins. And I'm just going to go around the Zoom room unless somebody wants to volunteer. I'll start with Becky.
I have nothing tonight.
Ben?
We had a letter last, a couple of weeks ago about visiting schools or just checking out some classrooms from one of the high school teachers at North. Or one of those emails that we received from the teachers. And I can't remember which, which teacher it was. I have it down in my notes somewhere, but she invited us to her, to check out her classroom. And then I've received a couple more invites to classrooms. I did go to Weaver yesterday, just to check out and see how hybrid's going. And going in in person is really good. It was really good for me to just kind of see what it really looks like. And I don't want to, I don't want to go on and on forever. If you guys know Weaver, it's really, it's highly populated. So if you go in there, if you would have went in, if you went into Weaver like a year ago, it's really crowded. There's a lot of students there. When I went in the other day, yesterday, there weren't a lot of students. And just looking around at the, at the different situations that every teacher is, is going through and what all the students are working on in hybrid and the class sizes and seeing everybody masked up and following safety protocol, but still like sitting there. I remember there was one classroom I was in, it had 14 or 15 kids in it. And they were, I'm sorry, I'm closing my eyes because I'm trying to imagine it. And they were working on like adding three numbers together. And they all, all the kids were sitting there with their masks on. And they're all working on a math problem together that was projected up on the smartboard. And the teacher was calling on them, and it was, it was a lot more participatory than like I, than I could have imagined sitting around at home and just reading emails and hearing it secondhand from other people. So I thought it was really helpful for me to go in and see that. So you know, I just, I'd recommend if you kind of feel out of the loop as far as what the classrooms are looking at, see if you can schedule some kind of a tour. And you know, talk to Kim, and she might be able to kind of tell you how that works. But it's, it was really helpful for me just to kind of see what things are looking like. And I think eventually, I know they, I know secondary just started hy- hybrid on Friday. So maybe in November, I'm going to go see a couple of classrooms, including that the North High School teacher that was, that invited us to her classroom a couple of weeks ago. So it was really cool, and it really, I'll say a last thing because I feel like I'm going on and on. But it made me feel really confident with what, with what the district is doing in, during the pandemic. And just seeing how coordinated and organized things were in Weaver really just made me feel really confident. So, okay, thanks guys.
I just, thanks Ben for, for doing that. I think that's really important. And I can say too that I have a, my little grandson is at Weaver. His mom chose distance learning, but he's also having a very good experience. You know, with a little rocky start, but I mean, you know, I mean, just teaching the kids how to mute and unmute. I mean, we have trouble with that, right? And then teaching them how to, you know, write the number five, you know, with, with, without a mouse or a, or a pen and paper. I mean, it's been, you know, it's, it's really interesting to see this. But they're soldiering through, and I really appreciate all the effort that, that our, our staff is putting in and the patience of, of our parents and students, so thanks.
All right, thanks Ben, thanks Nancy. Nancy, do you have anything else?
No, I don't have anything else, thanks. I mean, just everyone should have voted. Should have voted, and you know, it's, it's very important, so.
All right, thanks Nancy. Ben, you were finished, right? Did you have anything else? Yeah, okay. Steve, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening.
All right, thank you. And ready to Becky, Caleb?
I just wanted to help get the word out that on October 14th, we have a groundbreaking ceremony for the new elementary school in Maplewood. And also on October 20th, the groundbreaking for the new construction at Eagle Point. So that's, it's going to be a busy but exciting month for the district.
Great, thanks Caleb. Carly, do you have anything?
Um, no, you guys actually answered a few questions I had with Benjamin's Common and Caleb, so thank you.
I do have, well, first I want to just say about Ben talking about getting into the schools. Christine sent out a board update, and in the update, she said she was going to the secondaries. I think we got it Thursday, and she was going Friday or something. And I texted her and asked her, can I, can I take along? Because I think most board members know it's sometimes awkward just to walk into a school and, you know, look around. So it was nice to go with Christine. And we went to all five of the secondary schools, the three middle schools and the two high schools. And it was the first day of in-person learning. And it was amazing, and I was so glad I did it. The schools were super organized as far as safety with, you know, tape on the floor to make sure that the flow of traffic was safe and yard sticks for six feet between kids. And, you know, stickers on the floor to wait for the bathrooms. All kinds of things happening for safety. And then also, it was really interesting to see the teachers, like Ben mentioned, teaching in different ways. So we saw teachers who were teaching using accommodations where the teacher was teaching from home, but the students were on site and they're, you know, the big whiteboards they have, the teacher would be streaming in on the whiteboard. And there was a, like a substitute, like a building substitute was in the classroom that we saw that was helping manage the classroom. And the teacher was, you know, she's not just speaking to no one, she's speaking directly to the kids. She sees them, they see her. So it's very interactive, and it was great to see. And we also saw people who, many people, and my own kids, I have two high schoolers. They both told me that lots of their teachers do it. Many teachers who are teaching face-to-face with the students are also streaming out to their distance learners at the same time. And even on that first day of in-person learning, they were doing that. So that was surprising, amazing, great. Happy to see it. I don't know Christine, if you have anything to add about that visit?
No, I'll just say it's, it's, you know, been just amazing. And everyone has stepped up and been creative, and there was a lot of positivity in the air when we walked through those classrooms and, and through those buildings. And, you know, people are putting in countless hours to make this work. Our staff are, are just unbelievably working day and night to make all this come together. It's been amazing.
The only other item I had was, I've been asked more than once about the board's decision to meet virtually. And I think you've all seen, we had that in a couple of letters. And the question is, is if we expect staff to be on site, shouldn't the school board be meeting on site as well? And I have my own thoughts on that. And, but I did want to ask the board about it, just to see as a board, what are, you know, where we stand on that. I'm just going to briefly tell you where I personally stand on it, which is that I believe that the teachers, you know, as tier-two essential employees are coming into the schools because it's the best way for students to learn. And, you know, we all have jobs, and my job, I'm not an essential worker, and I do work from home. But my husband is an essential worker, and he's gone into work every day throughout the pandemic. And so I don't think that school board members are essential workers. And I think that the advice from Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health is when possible, you should work remotely. And when it's not possible, Um, and when it's not possible, you can take the safety precautions to be on site. We also have guidance from MSBA that says that we must offer remote board meetings. We can choose to do them on site, but we must also have a remote option. So I guess I just wanted to put it out there to see where, where you all stand on that.
I guess my, my one concern with having our meetings digital is with regards to public comment time. And I, I just don't know if there's a way for us to allow the public, members of the public who want to speak to the board, the ability to maybe record a video before the meeting and submit it? Or if they're able to temporarily link into our Zoom meeting, just for their two minutes or their five minutes? I, I'd hate for Michelle to have to read 79 letters again anytime soon. But I don't know, maybe, maybe Josh has a thought on that. And maybe the district's already looked into it quite a bit.
Yeah, so currently the option for public comment is that they email Kim. Is it by five o'clock typically Kim is the deadline for them to send you any public comment? And then Michelle would read the public comment. For our special meeting we held last month, where we had the resolution to close schools, we did publish the link so people could join our Zoom meeting if they had public comment. And so that would be an option for us to do that if the board so choose, so, so chose to do so. We could publish the link and we could offer folks the opportunity to come in to our Zoom meeting. They could call in if they wanted to do that option or they could join via video as well.
Thank you, Josh. I, I would definitely be in support of that, that option.
Okay, anybody else with thoughts on it?
You know, I guess I understand all the things that you're saying and that does make sense. For me personally, I do have a hard time with us being, all of us being virtual and doing it via Zoom when we do have people in the building. So, and I know it's probably more work for all of our, for Josh and our staff if we're trying to do both in-person and Zoom. So maybe that's our, you know, our thing for doing it one way or the other. But personally for me, if there was a choice, I would prefer to be in the building. I think, you know, we've, we've had some things in the building and we've shown that we can do it socially distanced. So that's, that's just where I would be at personally.
All right, thanks Becky. Anyone else?
I agree with Becky, Caleb and Joshua. And I like that the options though for public speaking though, for the, so that they can have an option to either do it virtual or come in person. Is that what you were saying Joshua? That the, for public, for the public sharing portion?
Public comment, we, we could, if they had public comment, we could share the Zoom link with them and they could either call in with the Zoom number that they're given or they could come in via video.
Okay, anyone else thoughts on this?
I just want to agree with Michelle's rationale that we should follow the, the guidelines and work remotely when we can. And, you know, we did do the, we have come in, you know, for the equity routine and some other things. So I mean, I'm open to coming in, but I think it's safer to do the, the Zoom meetings. And you're correct that it, you know, it makes it a little more cumbersome for the public, public comment. But I think we can work that out. So I would prefer to continue with the Zoom meetings.
I also would be in favor of continuing the Zoom meetings. I think that it's also important to send a message that that we intend to follow the guidelines and do what we can to safely reopen our schools. And I think it could send a message to some groups in our community that if we're, if we're all meeting in person, then it should be safe to open the schools. And I think that might create additional dialogue that wouldn't be helpful at this time. Remember too, when we talk about public comment, that's something that, that I hold sacred and I think it's extremely important. And I think we did a really good step when we moved forward with allowing people their opportunity to talk to the board without having to restrict it to an item that was already on the agenda. I think that was an important thing. But given the current climate, I don't know for sure how many people would be interested in coming into the school building to the, to a board meeting. Following all the COVID protocols in order to make their comments and might be that I think the reason we had so many emails was because it was the safest way to communicate with the board. I don't know if that would have happened if we would have said, well, let's have 70 people show up at the board meeting and, and take the time to give us their comments that Michelle took to read them. I mean, that would have been, you know, three and a half hours of intense COVID exposure if there was somebody COVID positive in that group. So, um, I, I find myself agreeing with, with Michelle's rationale, at least for the time being.
If I could add a comment, Michelle, just maybe so everybody understands too. To your point of the governor's order, we, while our teachers do come in person when they do their hybrid instruction, we've been very clear that everybody can be working remotely every minute of the day that they're not teaching students directly in person. And, and we've told our principals, no full in-person staff meetings, you've got to have Zoom. And if you think about even the part of the day where staff are in person, if it is a hybrid day and then they have their own personal prep and lunch period, we have said, go home and take those. You don't have to stay in the building. In fact, we prefer you go because we want to, because the governor's, and the governor's order has been very clear, everybody who can work remotely should. And we've taken that very seriously with every minute of the day and every minute of the week that doesn't involve direct contact with students in person. There are no in-person meetings for any staff either. They're all virtual. Just wanted to give you the context because I do, I do want to, I want everyone to be clear. We're not making our teachers stay in the buildings when they don't have to be physically there. In fact, we, we are not encouraging that at all.
Christine and Michelle, could I add one more point about public comment? Also, we are following MSBA's guideline to do public comment the way that we are by having people send emails to, to our office. Because they've said that they don't ever want a person to have to choose between feeling safe and coming to a public meeting or participating in public comment. So by submitting their comment through email to us to be read to the, by the chair, it allows for more participation.
All right, thanks Kim and thanks Christine for the additional context as well. Um, anything else on this topic?
Is it clear to the people that are sending the emails that they do have the option to jump on our Zoom calls and provide the, their public comment in their voice?
No, right now, the only option is to send an email. That's the direction. So if the board to change the format, our whiz Josh can make it happen.
Would we need to vote on the format change?
Um, so I'm not going to object to that change if you guys want to make the change. But I'm just going to say that my perception of this question isn't that people have an issue with the way we're handling public comment. It's that people have an issue that if you're going to make me go to work, then you should go to work too. So the idea is if teachers are on site, then you should be on site too. And I understand like kind of the frustration with it, but I just, I think there's a reason that meetings are virtual and that teaching is preferred in person. So I, I don't object to the change in public comment, if you guys like to do that. But I don't really think that, I've never heard that as a concern is what I should say.
I kind of feel a little bit too like it's a, I, I can't think of a better word to describe it, but it feels almost like a dare. And I don't want to play that game.
Yeah, maybe it's best to stick with MSBA's guidance and keep the public comment as they've recommended that we run it.
So if we did want to change it though, to provide the email option or to be able to join the Zoom, would we need to make a motion and vote on that?
No, it's just a procedure in which you choose to do.
Okay. And Kim, did anyone contact you? When we had that meeting last month, did anybody ask to be able to speak instead of just emailing?
No. Actually, I think a lot of people prefer to have the email. It's very difficult for the public often to come before the board. It can be intimidating. And I think for some people, having the option to email them is more comforting and more comfortable for them.
Okay.
Okay, so unless I'm misreading the board, we're going to keep things as they are for now with virtual meetings and with the letters for board comment until something changes in the guidance that we've received from MSBA or Minnesota Department of Health. Okay, um, that was the two items that I wanted to bring up with the group. I, um, are there any other comments or questions before we adjourn the meeting? I think that was our last. Is that Kim, for a study session, do we need a motion a second?
No, you just say it's adjourned and you're done.
All right. Okay, so last chance, anything else, guys? It's 6:54 and we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks a lot, have a good night, you guys.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.